Council meeting this evening, August 12th, 2015. We need to excuse our mayor this evening. He's with our city royalty over opening the Washington County Fair. So he will not be with us this evening. He needs to be excused. We anticipate the arrival of our other council members shortly, hopefully. We will open our meeting today with Councilman Staley giving our invocation, after which, Councilman Nison will open his in our pledge.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. We have an agenda before us this evening, looks like consisting of about 10 items. Look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So made.
Motion by Councilman Staley.
Second.
Second by Councilman Nison.
Nison, aye.
Staley, aye.
Turick, aye. Item number two, announcements. Anyone have any announcements this evening? We have the county fair starting tonight, running through the weekend. Encourage our residents to go out and join in with those good events that happened at the county put on there. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to item three, declaration of abstentions and conflicts. Any to report? None. Item four, consent agenda. Approval of the minutes for council meetings 7:21-15 and 7:22-15, and also approval of our board audit report. Any discussion that needs to take place with our board audit report?
I didn't have Kim to come tonight. We didn't have a chance to discuss it in workshop last night due to the election, but staff had emailed us the board audit report, and I didn't have any questions.
Okay. We'll look for a motion for approval then.
A motion to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the council meeting minutes of 7:21-15 and 7:22-15, and the board audit report for July.
Motion by Councilman Staley, seconded by Councilman Truman.
Nison, aye.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Turick, aye. Item five, ordinances. Consideration to approve an ordinance amending the city code, section 5.2.3, parking regulations. Not here yet. Okay. We'll move ahead from that, and we'll... Oh, you want it is? You want to present?
Well, no, but I know a little bit about it.
You're stalling for him for a minute.
I'm trying. I'm trying to go for him. Okay. On the ordinance, it's just a small bookkeeping that he's wanting to do. He's trying to combine 11 and then adding it on to the 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 that's on there. You know?
Yeah, so it looks like the existing ordinance has the first five.
Right.
And then he's adding 6, 7, and 8. That's the amendment to the ordinance.
Yes. So he's adding those ones, and then the one he's taking, the section L, he's actually moving it out of one area and putting it into the other. Putting it in with 5, 2, 3. He's adding L from another section and just moving it down so that it falls in the parking regulations, so that it's easier for the officers and everyone to find it.
Well, I just didn't... I just would like to hear the history on it. You know, it sounds like it's trying to address vehicles that are parked on the sidewalk.
Right, so they don't move them across the street and then move them right back.
Yeah, so I just want to know what the history has been. We haven't had it in workshop on, but...
Yeah. I'm troubled by the entire ordinance because it seems so almost draconian. Somebody parks a car for 48 hours, and say they use it two or three times a week, they can get cited for having the car parked out in front of their home, and they take it out for 24 hours and bring it back to the same spot, they're in violation. I just don't see that being a very sensible thing.
From my understanding, when I was talking to him about this ordinance, it's for people who have vehicles that are not necessarily moving. They're staying put and just moving them and then moving them back.
And so I think we need to make it state there, rather than just anybody that's had a vehicle there for 24 hours, even if they move it for a day, they're still in violation.
And we don't have the actual ordinance in place. Wanted to discuss it with you first, so...
I read through the ordinance, and it's... The ordinance is... It just looks like the item 6, 7, and 8 that addressed the parked cars, and maybe this is something that Chief Keith could give us a little background on in a workshop, and we could discuss maybe if there's a more appropriate length of time, because I understand he's probably trying to address cars that sit there permanently, almost.
I'm hoping he'll be here a little bit later. I don't think he realized we'd moved through it quite so fast.
Do we want to... What do you think?
I'll look for the council's direction there, whether you want to table and read work clear through a work session, or whether you want to come back later in the meeting and discuss it and see if you want to table at that point.
I personally have so many concerns about the breadth of it. I think we need to narrow it somewhat to make it really targeted what he's after. Otherwise, people may say you have selective enforcement, some people get hit by it and others don't, so I think we ought to table it and go through it in a workshop.
Okay. We'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we take this, table it, and put it onto a workshop agenda for discussion with Chief Keith.
Here we have a motion for a table, seconded by Councilman Nison.
Nison, aye.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Turick, aye. We'll work through that one in a workshop and bring it back. Item six, agreement. Consideration to approve a first amended interlocal cooperative agreement regarding the distribution of the RAP tax revenue in Washington County. Does Council Starkey...
Yeah. These were just the changes that were made. Because I understand these are the changes that were ultimately sent over to the county attorney's office, and then it was... They were revised and come back, so I can't speak to the specifics. We discussed this once before. It's been a while, however, and this is just kind of the final agreement that is back from the county attorney for changes we had requested and added. So I know that it's ready for signature blocks is part of the reason that this is before you have to go.
Any concerns that we have there concerning revisions that we've asked the county to make, and supposedly it sounds like they've done that?
I read through it. I didn't see anything that jumped out at me, but I'm a little less trained than the attorneys that are on my left and right here, so...
And we had this discussion once before.
But I didn't see anything that was... Yeah, it's come to us before.
And the comments we sent back, and again, I just couldn't identify which comments were incorporated or which weren't, but this is basically the final draft from the county back to us, and I know he didn't have any concerns. That's why he wanted to bring it back to you.
It seems to be that, from the way I read, it looks like this is the agreement that is going to all of the cities and towns within the county. So it's pretty uniform language. It just specifies the way that the funds will be distributed, yeah, so...
My only question is, this advisory board that will dictate some of the distribution, do we have any ability to influence that? Is that a board created solely by the county?
Correct. Have influence through the county. We don't have requirement to do the same thing on a local level, but the only influence I would suspect is this through your discussions with the county commissioners.
And, you know, and it did clearly state in the agreement that as a municipality, we can elect to use their advisory board, or we can go through our own process. So it left that open to us on how we...
And I think most cities that I understand have chosen not to appoint any boards that the legislative body feels the most responsible to the community with respect to the decisions. And so I wouldn't be... I don't know how much the cities will use the county board.
We're a little different than the county. Our board's got five members that, you know, I think we've got a pretty good elected board already that consider those things.
Any other discussion?
There's not. Mayor Potem, I make the... I will make the motion that the council approve the first amended interlocal cooperation agreement regarding the distribution of RAP tax revenue in Washington County.
Here we have a motion by Councilman Seg Miller.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Staley.
Nison, aye.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Turick, aye. Item B, discussion and review of how the RAP tax allocation is to be handled in our city. Councilman Staley.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. So this has been, I guess, something that I've had my eye on for a little while is with some of the committees that I work with and some of the thoughts that we've all had regarding recreation, arts, and parks. So as this came about, I took the opportunity to meet with the manager and with our department head over leisure services and some of the staff to get their input and share some ideas. I've also had the opportunity to meet with several council members and have discussions with several council members, and really just as trying to get some input on the direction that we should take. Through that process, I've tried to summarize some of the things that were important. I'll go through those with the list that I'd made, and if you recall anything different through our discussions, please feel free to jump in, and then I'd like to maybe go into maybe a little bit more of a detailed discussion, you know, based on those parameters. So the first thing that we felt, and again, these are summarizing notes from other council members and staff, the first thing we felt like is that the RAP tax, the priority on it being spent would be in Washington City. As the interlocal agreement that we just passed, there is 15% of that, I believe, goes directly to the county of the total tax, and that's the advisory board that we mentioned they would allocate those funds. So we get a portion of the remainder, they split it equally, and then there's also a point-of-sale portion too. So the portion that would come to Washington City, we felt like, number one, our main priority would definitely be that it would be spent within our own city boundaries. The second thing that we felt like, where this is a recreation, arts, and parks tax that was voted on and approved by the citizens, we felt like the money did not necessarily have to be for government to spend. We felt like there are cultural organizations, arts organizations, and other projects and recreation activities that are not necessarily government-sponsored entities. And the way that I read the agreement, it doesn't sound like it... As long as we follow state law, it doesn't sound like it prohibits us from doing that. So some of the feedback back I got is that some of the money could go towards non-governmental projects. And of course, there would be a process for the allocation of those funds. The third thing that came back in those discussions is that the council would be the deciding and directing body on the pro... And on the process that should be similar, on how the money is spent and used, and that we talked about the process of how it should be spent would be similar to the way we come to decisions in land use, where we take a broad type of vision, a general plan or a general vision of it, and as we move forward through the process, we get through a zoning and a plating. Similarly to this, we would take more of a vision, and then we would decide, prioritize, and get that down to an actual execution. So that was some of the discussion there. Another point that was brought up was the revenue would not necessarily be used towards things that would already be covered within the budget. I think a lot of the people that were supportive of this said, "We would like something in addition to," or it's not something that would already just be provided by government within the budget for recreation and parks and arts. So we felt like that the money could be used for something that's not already budgeted for. Then the fifth thing was that we felt like, in feedback, that this would be money that could be used to create physical and cultural assets that build and strengthen our community through arts and recreation. Obviously, those are... Then number six, we would like to be accountable to the citizens, and we would like to be able to show them what was accomplished by the recreation, arts, and parks revenue, and that, you know, obviously, this is a 10-year period. We would like to be able to direct those revenues on a more of a long-term basis so that the vision that we develop, as it funnels down to the execution, would have the funds to see the project fulfilled. So those are kind of six to the high-level things that have taken from multitude discussions because outside of public meetings, I can't meet with two of you at a time. Were there anything, things that I missed on that portion of, that you recall from our discussions?
I just, I want to say thanks for all your work on this and reaching out, and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss it. I didn't bring up number six, but somebody you met with did, or you did, and I really liked that one as well. I thought that was a great addition. And I didn't bring up, I didn't bring up all the others either. A few of those I remember discussing, but number six is a great idea. I liked the idea of, at the end of the 10 years, we can look back and have an accounting of this is what this is what this accomplished, this is what your citizens got from this added tax.
So as we start, I guess, at the broad entry point of this funnel, without overthinking, and again, this is still in the visionary part, and this is in the discussion part, but we talked about, as we break up recreation, arts, and parks, it breaks up nicely into thirds. Some of those will overlap, some recreation-type activities and parks will overlap, and even in some circumstances, arts will overlap. We felt like that might be at least some guideline for how those dollars would be spent, and...
So I kind of envision, maybe it would be a resolution of the council that tries to distill those into writing, says, you know, "These are kind of the priorities that we look at as we seek to spend the citizens' recreation and parks money." Two, this is the process that we have, that anybody who thinks they qualify can engage to seek consideration of that. I think to be specific in the resolution as to who would or wouldn't get it is probably too precise at this point, and then we would be, we would add that precision each year as we decide how we spend these funds, or whatever it is that the decision comes up.
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think there's any way we could put in who's going to get the money. I have a heartburn even knowing that, because on those parameters, if I understood them correctly, basically, it's something that's not in the budget already, and we already have a budget that looks out 10 years or more. Right? So we're essentially saying this money's going to go to private sector, pretty much.
And I, yeah, I'd be happy to... And actually, I didn't hear back from you when I invited you to lunch, but I did have a chance to talk with everyone else. So let me maybe get a little further down, and I'll show you some of the things that we talked about. On the big picture, one of the things, and maybe this is why my interest has been towards this RAP taxes, I've, we've talked about this in our retreat, we've talked about this in elections and different things, but we've talked about our downtown. And obviously, that, the dollars would go into our budget, but we looked at the Veterans Park area, and really, the whole entire area along Main Street to 100 East, 100 West, and to the north, a block or two, would be a downtown area where we're currently working on a conceptual plan for that. It's difficult to take Veterans Park in the downtown area and renovate and create something that's attractive, that puts on a good face for Washington, when we don't have the money to do it. It's easier to build new parks because we have impact fee dollars, and impact fee dollars can only go towards new construction. They can't go to renovate an existing park. We could use general fund dollars, but the general fund has so many draws on it already that it's really tough to justify renovation of a park when we have so many other pressing needs that we're trying to balance.
I guess when I, when I hear "not in the budget," it's not, we've budgeted for trails in the past, therefore, this can't go to trails. It's, it's this particular trail that we want to use it for hasn't been contemplated in our budgetary process to date, and so it's adding to something that we hadn't considered or maybe been saving for.
Do we have any idea yet what the amount of money will be coming yearly is?
The amount that's estimated for the first year was $269,000.
That's speculation if the economy holds strong.
Yeah. It's a one-tenth of 1% of sales.
Sales tax.
I noticed this was a 10-year plan you proposed. Would this be reviewed every year by the council?
I think it could, and again, Councilman Nison, we're just on the early phases of this, so, I mean, I think it definitely needs to be reviewed as part of the budget, and I maybe didn't explain that correctly with outside of the budget. I would just say that I think that this would be something in addition to what's already budgeted for. I...
I really like Councilman Staley's approach. It reminds me of the Covington home, and it wasn't by fault of the council, but by the way of how we acquired it, we didn't have the ability to do any planning beforehand. We acquired it, and then we had some, you know, conversations trying to decide, how do we use this and what will it be used for? I liked the idea that before we start collecting RAP tax, we kind of distill our values and priorities for these funds in a more of a general statement, that would then be a guide to us each budget period, as we start to say, okay, this is, this is how much is there, and here's the, here's the, here's the ideas, and here's our principles, and let's make a decision on how we want to spend this.
And I guess I'm thinking of the recent Supreme Court decision on the... Where you have the justices who say you have eight peoples, nine people on the Supreme Court who pretend to know what the population wants. We have a few of us here who pretend to know what the population wants, we really know what they want. You know, I think it'd be wise to get input from the citizens to say, where do you want your art tax money to go? You know, maybe we do the surveys, we have public forums.
And that's, as Councilman Staley kind of presented this, that was kind of the feeling that I felt he was trying to do, is to kind of put some parameters in place, or processes to where you then, the community would engage in that process of saying, here's, here's the recreation projects that we think that are important, here's our arts projects, and those may be the more public-type projects, and that way, we do, obviously, it's, we want what the citizens want. So, no, I think that's what he's trying to do, is just trying to put a process in place.
Yeah, and I think we have to have that process, rather than us saying, okay...
We're making those decisions.
We're going to give a third of it to private sector projects, a third to this, a third to that, whatever it is. Let's get input and say, it's your money, it's your tax dollars, you voted to have your money spent. Where do you want it spent?
Well, I think that's why we're talking about that funnel approach, so we can get some feedback.
The feeling that I had too, Councilman, is when we talked about those monies that made, that were probably our projects that weren't in the budget, that we couldn't use it on budgeted items, but those that weren't would be a priority or take precedence maybe to, to an item that may be included in the budget. It doesn't always say that, you know, we couldn't use it on a project if we felt that was the most appropriate and best return on investment for our citizens, that's what they wanted it to go towards, that we couldn't, but maybe that a priority, that something got a little extra, I guess, that was the thought, was there was a little something extra that came because of the tax.
Yeah, I mean, we've already got pretty hard parameters from the tax itself, right? There's only so many areas that can be spent. I'm really comfortable with that idea, saying, these are the, these are what we view as priority areas that we would like to spend this on if we can find them and come up with the ways to make those things a priority. I guess at the end of the day, if we can't, we end up using it for maybe a park that's been in the plan for a while or something else, right? That would still qualify with the ordinance.
And then, as I understand, the process, what we're looking at is, once we come up to them, if it's going to be a private sector who wants it, it's going to be some sort of competitive process where they're going to say, here's our plan, here's your proposal, here's where to put this money to work, and then the proposal, as we as a body, will sit down and say, yea, nay, we think that's a good idea, it's not a good idea, we're going to want to do money there and there.
Yeah, that's, the ordinance, the interlocal agreement says, "The municipalities may choose to utilize the advisory board, but are not obligated to do so." And it says, "Each municipality may establish a procedure for considering applications from and distributing RAP tax revenue to cultural organizations." So outside of things that I think would be implemented into our budget, but not necessarily taking care of things that probably should already be taken care of within the budget, there would, it sounds like there should be an application process to prioritize.
Yeah, certainly, because everybody's going to have to feel like they're on equal footing.
The manager, am I correct? I thought I saw a notice from the county where they meant, they've already got a notice out, almost like a, what's the word, RFP process, where they kind of request groups come and make their, make their...
Yeah, we've, we've actually had three dispersions already of the RAP tax over the last three months, and so I believe that the county has begun this very process, a procedural process, and they're working on their... It's a lot like CDBG in a lot of cases, people come and apply, because the city is the sponsor of CDBG, and now there are a lot more written rules with CDBG than currently with RAP tax. Yes, I believe you're correct. The county has already begun that process.
Begin their solicitation process of who?
And the county will largely be a funnel, because they don't hold a lot of asset like we do, like parks per se. They may somewhere, but...
Purgatory.
Purgatory.
Most people don't want to go to them.
But anyway, I think you're right.
But they can, they can then, you know, distribute their funds based on their process to any organization within the county.
Yeah. Yeah. We, I talked, we're still looking to make sure that under, because there was, there is some state statute language with regards to, and we don't know how this applies yet. We're just looking into a state statute that requires it with regards to who can be donated to. Certain qualifications need to be met. I don't think they're really onerous, but we need to make sure we know what those are. We're working on that, right?
Do we know if they have to be charitable organizations?
Well, some thought that we have is yes, they have to have a 501(c)(3) now for those entities that probably will be approaching us. Either they have one, or they can become one, and, but we don't know that for sure. So I don't want to be too premature, but there is some statute, and this all flows out of some court cases that occur on the very issue that Councilman Truman is talking about, and that is the equity and the distribution out to handle. The legislature has put someone in that still.
It does, in this interlocal agreement, it references a section of the Utah Code of how the RAP tax revenue can be expended. So that may be something that Council Starkey can review, so that as we have applications, if there are cultural organizations that come forth, I'm reading, and I'm just looking at real quick here, 59-12-701. And I have another 59-12-703. So it's somewhere in that area, it might be something we could read to make sure that we're following state law. That seems to be the guideline that it gives, is that we've got to follow state law as we do that. But a big part of that, like I say, from my standpoint, and we would definitely encourage public input to this, would be, would be the downtown. That's been something that's been on people's minds, been on the council's mind for a long time. It's been said that the downtown is a reflection of how a city feels about itself, and we have a lot of gatherings and a lot of recreation and family, you know, citizen park events there that I feel like, over time, RAP dollars could have a big impact. We are waiting for that conceptual plan still. I know that our land architects...
I'm hoping by the end of the month.
Yeah. We're anxious on that, because it'd be nice to see, you know, what that, what that plan could be, and obviously, it'd be revised over time. And then there's just, and I won't spend all night on this, but, you know, trails have been brought up from the art standpoint, aside from, you know, some of the recreation and parks, the Washington Band, Councilman Nison brought up Days of '47, he brought up Cotton Days, volunteers and entertainment, Brigham Play, Brigham's Playhouse is here tonight, would hope to maybe give them some time. Those are some of the entities that are, that are active and involved already in our city that, you know, that may, you know, that may qualify and could maybe benefit from a portion of the, of the revenue, so that's what I have.
Did you get that, Councilman Truman?
Looks like most of them are nonprofit, private nonprofit organizations.
Yeah, 59-12-602. Cultural organization means private nonprofit.
Well, thank you, Councilman Staley. It's, we, I certainly do also appreciate the legwork you've done in starting this process, because it's a big process, and it has to start somewhere, and so I think, I think what you bring to us tonight is a great start with how we need to continue forward now, probably have the mayor put it on our next workshop session to begin to have those discussions and putting... of putting parameters in place and processes and...
You know, seeing that this was a fairly light agenda, I did take the liberty of inviting Brigham's Playhouse, and I think they've prepared just a short presentation as maybe of an idea of what some, you know, some of the revenue could do to help our art community within the city. Mayor Protem, would you mind if they came and presented through that?
No, I don't see there being a problem with this presentation of possibly, this is how or the effects that these types of taxes might have, obviously, as a council, we couldn't take into effect distribution
Correct.
and things off this night, obviously, they would have to come back through the process, whatever that process is. But I certainly think it would help us as a council to understand maybe the needs that our community has out there, different organizations, and this would be one type of need that we have, so I wouldn't see a problem with that, Mayor.
And I guess before they come up again, I want to tell Councilman Staley thanks as well. We kind of take a leading charge on this, getting this implemented, it's nice to know, hopefully, you can be ahead of the curve on it, so thanks for your...
I agree, thanks.
If you, if our presenters wouldn't mind coming up and taking just a few minutes to kind of share with us maybe how the wrap tax would affect some of the entities?
Yes, we thank you for the opportunity and the invitation from Councilman Staley to present. The presentation that I prepared is one of information to create a perspective of one of the city's artistic resources, a perspective that you might use to consider your creation of the vision. Brigham's Playhouse is something, of course, that I'm very passionate about, and that is because of the impact that we see that it is having on the community. I'm not sure if you're familiar with Brigham's Playhouse, but in January of two thousand and fourteen, we walked into the Town Hall in Cotton Town Village and began the renovations, and six weeks later, we opened our first show there. Since that time, we've had eighteen productions that we have presented. And if you compare that to what Tuacan has done in that same year and a half time, you can kind of put that in perspective, we've at least doubled the number of productions that they produce. We've done four hundred and six performances in the eighteen months that we've been open. It takes quite an army to be able to produce that many performances. We've had more than seven hundred performers, designers, and technicians that have come from the community that have participated in what we offer artistically at Brigham's Playhouse. And we've served, this number is a week old, we're up above thirty-three thousand audience members now in, that have come through Brigham's Playhouse and enjoyed what we've done. And those are thirty-three thousand people that didn't have something to do in the evenings in Washington a year and a half ago, and I think that's an important thing to keep in mind. Brigham's Playhouse is owned by the Youngs and the Naps. My name is Jamie Young, I'm a former professor of musical theater of twenty years and a theater department chair for twelve of those years. And Doug Knapp is a former professor of music and an LDS seminary teacher. And in the picture there, you can see our good wives that are holding down the fort over at the playhouse tonight. We also employ twenty-three performing artists. Some of those come from outside the area. We provide housing for those that come from outside the area. We have five apartments, four of which are in Washington, that we pay for, subsidize, that those performers live in. We also employ local professionals, people who have wanted to work professionally but haven't been able to do so are coming and able to have that opportunity now. Mostly, we rely upon the volunteers. Of those seven hundred that I mentioned, the large majority, of course, are volunteers that come from the community that are looking for enrichment kind of activities to participate in. Much like the athletes get plenty of opportunities to do, there's not very many artistic outlets in Washington for them to come and participate in. So, we see literally hundreds flocking to us for that opportunity. And I think one of the most exciting contributors to what we do at Brigham's Playhouse is the youth. We have seventy to eighty youth auditioning for all of our youth productions, and we have had hundreds participate in all that we've done. And, you know, that's an important thing. There are a lot of studies that show that artistic involvement helps to improve their academics and their life skills. And there are also studies that show that when a youth's hands are left empty and the opportunity to be creative is not fulfilled, then they fill that void with destructive behavior, whatever that destructive life pattern might be. Creativity and artistic opportunities help to provide alternatives for that. We are in Cotton Town Village, we're next to the Red Barn and Rigotti's Pizza, which is slightly outside the downtown area that Councilman Staley was just defining. We provide six performances per week, Tuesday through Saturday night at seven PM, and also Saturday matinee performance. We run each of our productions for six weeks, and we have nine productions a year. So, what that means is that we are giving people nine opportunities to come into Washington City on an annual basis, people that a year and a half ago had to go into Saint George or other locations for this kind of opportunity. This year, our productions are Jane Eyre, Scarlet Pimpernel, Mary Poppins, Joseph Smith, Praise to the Man, a show that we wrote ourselves and provided free to the community, youth production, Anne of Green Gables, Fiddler on the Roof is playing right now, along with another youth production, Bridge to Terabithia. And we'll be next doing the Broadway musical, The Secret Garden, and closing out our year with the Christmas musical, It's a Wonderful Life. The benefits to Washington, I've already started to allude to, but the quality of life for the citizens is greatly enhanced by a theater. We provide wholesome family entertainment. It's great to see families coming through our door. Date night has taken on a whole new meaning now. It's really exciting to see families participating in what we're doing. Each of the shows that we present has an uplifting message which impacts the citizens of Washington, improves their neighborliness and the way that they enjoy their lives. The community involvement, I've already mentioned multiple times. Lots of opportunities for athletes, not as many for artists in the area. Youth camps, we provide several camps during the summertime, classes throughout the year, and productions throughout the year for youth. So, again, the quality of life is greatly enhanced by what we're doing at Brigham's Playhouse. Something that are part of national studies, these are not just my words, but statistics that are presented through national studies, the economic impacts that a theater has on a community. That's pretty substantial. We have the capacity in our small little theater of bringing in fifty-five thousand people annually to the area. That's people from both local market and from tourists. We already do see quite a few tourists coming in. We have season ticket holders in Mesquite, in Beaver, in Las Vegas, Salt Lake City, even in Los Angeles, people that come back to Washington specifically to see our shows. We're also working with the bus tour industry. In April, the, one of the largest bus tour organizations will be having their annual conference in Las Vegas, and they have already asked for us to be on their agenda. They will be bussing up every participant of that conference from Las Vegas to Washington City to attend a show at Brigham's Playhouse, to see if Washington and Brigham's Playhouse is a viable destination for their bus tour industry. This has already been arranged, this is just the tip of the iceberg of potential that we're trying to do. Our resources right now are so thin that it's very difficult for us to continue bringing in that kind of tourist industry, but it's something that is very beneficial for not just Brigham's Playhouse, but for the entire community because these people who come to see our shows most often also go out to eat in the local restaurants. The tourists that come in are staying in the local hotels, and the studies show that they also shop in the area when they come to see the shows. Something else to keep in mind, Brigham's Playhouse is helping Washington become a destination location. Before we were here, what families would often do for entertainment is pick up a video, which brings three or four economic dollars back into the area. But now, we see that they have new possibilities, they're coming and seeing shows. They might have gone into Saint George in the past to see a movie or to see another show, to go bowling or something like that. But now, they have something here in Washington to do, and this is allowing them to form new habits. And, you know, it's not just a show, they usually do other kinds of things when they're going out and about. So, it is a great opportunity for all of Washington to benefit. I did mention that we are bringing tourists into the area. Interesting little anecdote to go along with that. We had some patrons that were coming down from Salt Lake to see our, actually, it was from Utah County. They were coming down to see our shows regularly, they fell in love with the area while they were down here, and they've now purchased a home. So, you know, not to mention those that are already coming here for parade of homes, the triathlon, the marathon, soccer tournaments, other conventions and conferences, they look for things to do at nighttime. And so, having an artistic outlet like Brigham's Playhouse increases the appeal of Washington as a destination location for future conference or event attendance. So, these things, quality of life, fueling the local economy and a destination location are all benefits to the city of Washington. We know that Saint George already has its theater, that's Saint George Musical Theater. We know that Ivans has its theater, and that's Tuacan. We know that Hurricane has its theater, and that is the Hurricane Valley Theatrical Company. Brigham's Playhouse would like to become Washington City's theater. If I can just show a few examples of how other municipalities are supporting their theaters, I think it would help create a little bit of a vision for how the wrap tax might be used. The city of Saint George helped Saint George Musical Theater by providing all of the risers for their seating, state-of-the-art lighting system, wireless sound system, which both of these things are very costly. They provide the facility, which is currently the old Opera House, and some of the rehearsal facilities that go along with that. They subsidized their first production quite substantially, and they allow them to do all sorts of advertising through the city. Hurricane situation, the city of Hurricane provides their theater company with a facility. The community center there has a large theater, it's fully equipped with lighting and sound, all state-of-the-art systems that are provided by the city. The city also pays the salaries of the key artists involved, and each of the shows are one hundred percent totally subsidized by the city. Right on the theater company's website is the proud logo of Hurricane City with the statement that it's sponsored by them, and the city also provides a lot of advertising. Again, you know, why do these cities sponsor their theater? It's because of all of these reasons. Again, these are national statistics and reasons, not just mine. So, really, the question that I would ask you to consider as you're creating the vision of the use of the wrap tax is, will Washington City sponsor Brigham's Playhouse and the arts in your decision-making? And I'm not asking for a handout, Brigham's Playhouse is not established in the form of most arts organizations where they rely totally upon handouts. I'm asking for a partnership with the city. I think I've clearly stated what the benefits to the city are, and so, I would ask that eventually, when we go through the application process, that we would be appropriated a portion of the wrap tax. We also hope that as part of that partnership, that the city would allow us more advertising. When we first began, we were included in the monthly newsletter that came out. The mayor included us in the mayor moment, he came and did video shoots with us, and there was a lot of help. But we've been excluded from that now. We've been denied multiple times from being able to even put up street signs to advertise our productions. Community Center constantly has signs up advertising the beneficial things to the community. We believe that our events are equally beneficial, and we would like to be considered equally for those opportunities. We also hope that there'd be some other in-kind support that would be part of that partnership. And we would like to be Washington City's artistic emissary. If you have dignitaries that are visiting, we would love to be able to provide them entertainment. If you have other events, we could provide entertainment for those. We'd love to be able to be an attractive part of your website that allures people to the beauties of Washington City. Fifth, the wrap tax, we would be able to increase our marketing efforts, bring more people to the area. We would also be able to enhance the offerings for the youth and community members. So, as you're considering, you know, how to use the wrap tax, we hope that you'll keep in mind the peripheral residual kinds of effects that this money can have on the people. Taxpayers' dollars should be used to provide a better quality of life and to stimulate a better economy. And I thank you for your time in those considerations, and would love to be a part of any workshops or anything you have in the future. I have a long career and studied this, presented it to students for many, many years. I could bring some nice insights to your discussion, thank you.
Any comments?
I was just going to say, I assume that Brigham's Playhouse is a nonprofit entity?
Councilman Truman, we are an LLC that has a not-for-profit mission. We're not a 501(c)(3). I've spent my entire career in the 501(c)(3) industry. I have chosen specifically to use my own funds and the funds of the other owners to make this happen. We're not in this to make money, we are in it to be able to provide the culture and the uplift for the community.
And I raise that because if that's one of our limits, you might want to get some legal advice on whether you can even apply or not apply and...
At this point in time, my understanding is that, I've heard from both the mayor and from Councilman Staley, that the county has chosen to make that a stipulation, but this city council has not yet made that decision.
We just looked at the state statute and said it has to be a nonprofit organization that applies for the funds.
Yeah, I would like our Council Starkey to take a look at that as well, another review of that. And then, we're early in the process, but I would also say that there are other avenues, other 501s. We have a 501(c)(3), don't we, manager?
We're just finalized, as I was going to mention, you can keep your independence on your LLC and create a foundation with the 501(c)(3), and that Councilman Staley is referring to the fact that Washington is just completing what we're referring to as the Washington City Foundation, and its purpose is just to be eligible.
Right, we are likewise looking at those kinds of opportunities and seeking legal counsel to make sure that we're not getting into the money laundering business or anything like that.
I'm assuming for the mere fact, well, you mentioned that you, your other life, had been involved with 503(c's. Do you have any counsel, maybe for this council, as we begin this process, or insights of parameters, especially for public use or public entities? Or non-public entities, I guess, is more like this, that maybe you could share with us quickly? Or maybe a workshop session might be more appropriate, but...
Yeah, I would be more than glad to attend that. I think Councilman Truman's suggestion of making sure that there is a protocol that all entities are equally considered through is absolutely essential, and that those parameters are clearly spelled out in what qualifications there are for an entity to be able to even apply, and what kind of accountability they'll have to the funds that they receive. I think those kinds of things can be clearly spelled out and part of the application process. And after the follow-up, after the application process and the funds are used, a follow-up before reallocation, I think would be absolutely essential.
Great, you bring up some great points.
What kind of, your presentation mentioned in some in-kind contributions. Is that referring to things like equipment or such?
Well, just to give you an example of some of what we face... Well, just to give you an example of some of what we face, the need for storage is a big thing. You know, right now, we're just barely, you know, for example, our lease payment this month was nearly two weeks late. We're just barely scraping by on being able to get through the bare essentials. And so even $150 for a storage unit is out of the question for us at this point in time. I have no idea. I'm not familiar with Washington's infrastructure well enough to know if you have some storage somewhere. But, you know, that's just an example to answer your question, Councilman Turrit.
Presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience with that. I wasn't quite sure what to prepare for, but...
Well, I think it helps us as a council. See, I think that we had some of an idea of the benefits, but I think this kind of helps us understand the benefits that can come to our community. And maybe sometimes it isn't always in building hard assets, but it comes through strengthening our community and our children and their opportunities that may not be athletically, it may be through cultural events and opportunities.
I appreciate your recognition of that. That explains my passion to the T.
Well, thank you, and hopefully we'll have you back on a formal presentation. And certainly we'll invite you in when we, and probably other members of our community, if you know of anybody in the community, we certainly probably funnel that to Councilman Staley. I think he's gonna kind of headshot this through our workshop session. So if you have anybody else in the community, or anybody that may be watching on TV tonight that may have some expertise or some help or desire to be involved with that, let's have him get in touch with Councilman Staley and bring him in as part of that.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your time.
Mayor Protem, just as we close this discussion down, I have to laugh, and you'll remember this because we went to lunch earlier this week, and as part of that, we went and visited the St. George Art Museum. And we just kind of looked to see, St. George has got some nice things going in the art community where they, you know, host the St. George Musical Theater and they have their art and River Walk. And so they've got some nice things going. So rather than completely reinvent the wheel, we searched for some ideas that would complement our neighbors as we contemplate the downtown and the arts. Well, we went in and a volunteer that was working at the art museum, we had, he kind of explained what we were doing. And she said, "Now, where is Washington City's downtown?" She said, "I'm familiar with Regatti's and Brigham's Playhouse, but I'm not sure where the downtown is." So either way, we've got some work to do in keeping and enhancing what we have along our main street here, so.
Great. Any other discussion concerning this? Thank you again, Councilman Staley, and we look forward to bringing this on forward to fruition.
Maybe just discussion of our next step. Do we...
I think unless the council has a different desire, we'll have the mayor put it on our next workshop session, and we'll begin that process through the workshop of input and parameters and procedures in place to...
I like that.
Okay. Item number seven, our branding committee. This is a discussion review of a possible tagline from our branding committee. This will be handled by myself. It's a refresher back to the council. If you remember back to our retreat, then we made a decision that maybe our tagline of Where Dixon Begins may be due for a change and a refresher, or do something a little different there. So I've been serving with a great group and a committee to refresh that. We brought a couple of different ideas to the council and received some good information and reworking of things. And as a committee, we went back and reworked it and come up with a little different tagline. We brought in a, I shouldn't say we brought in, he was a part of our committee, hadn't been able to meet with us, Jeff Sherman, who does a lot of work with advertising or corporations and their taglines and their branding. And he kind of brought us some great ideas of, because we were thinking of multiple taglines for different things in the city, of one for economic development, one for, you know, for recreation. And he said, "Look, you only want one tagline. You need one tagline for your business, not six." And so we started to relook at things. Obviously, you can see with the tagline that we would like to bring to the council tonight, and hopefully for some approval, is "Life in Bloom." And we've thought that that fit nicely with our cotton ball. It's blooming. It still fits with our heritage and whatnot. And so appreciate Steve being here. We've done some mockups of some different types of... Yeah, different ways that we may can use the tagline with different, you know, one of them, obviously, we have a billboard up above the freeway that we're looking at that we thought, "Well, we'll incorporate something along this." And, but other ways that we'll use the tagline are opportunities. And so certainly let Steve kind of show us some ideas and then take input from the council.
Just one disclaimer, these are mockups. They're not meant to be the final product. They're supposed to show you, like, composition.
Our thought was that the council usually is very good at giving input, as we see things to say, "Hey, I like that. I don't like that." And then we can go out and re-put flesh on the skeleton that we bring tonight. Steve, take it away.
Oh, these balloons aren't really in the air, but there's a couple of balloon images here. Showed this vibrance. And then he did several different types of our logo. Some outdoor rec. That's a real picture.
You mean the tires aren't quite on the oil?
And then parks. We've told him the next time the picture should be happier children.
Yeah, they're like depressed children.
Apparently that fields really in Washington, where the people are not. Same biker later that day. Again, happiness. This one actually turned out well, except for we were doing flags at half-mast at that time, so.
Yeah, normally that flag would be down.
And this one was to show the, you know, the city blooming, the building. It's gonna be hopefully easier to find a house under construction to get a real picture, as we call them. And those guys were just out goofing off. I don't think they were paying. They were just out there playing.
Those after hours.
Better keep our golf course, because this is the route we're going.
Fishing child. Those people are from the 50s, I think, but...
But other than the people, that is a real shot there.
It is, other than the people. I heard that that place was full of those trees before they built a park the other day. I guess that's it. I lost it. Bring up that last one again, or the last couple. My neighbor, this is my neighbor playing football. I took this picture when my son was that age, a few years back.
Well, one of the things that we thought with this tagline is we can use it, really it kind of depicts life as a whole, whether it's, you know, our recreation, whether it's events, activities, whether it's economic impacts, whether it's people moving here trying to encourage residents to relocate to our community, that really that tagline can be used. And it depicts really what we are, is life. We're in bloom down here.
And be set, "Let's get dirty," or whatever it was.
The Dirty Secrets.
I guess just to say, when we decided to do this rebranding, it's not that our current one is awful.
No.
I almost feel like it's just, we feel like it's time to get a new one, right? It's maybe, fail's not the right word, but we've probably used it up. We've kind of made as much value as we could out of that one.
Are you talking about the art and like the logo and stuff?
No, I'm talking about the Where Dixon Begins. I've always kind of liked that, but I also can see where it's new opportunities and some new chances to focus on some things with Life in Bloom. I like it. I think we've done a good job in a lot of our construction to add flowers and blooming things. And, you know, I'm thinking of the telegraph drive, and there's always something booming in those planter boxes. A lot of ways we can emphasize that. I think a lot of people move to this community and really enjoy their life here, too.
One of the things, we don't want to move away from our history, and we were very conscientious of that. So we thought, hey, if we can still keep that cotton ball, which is us, our history's here, we've got a mission, we are what we are. So we thought that this kind of accomplished both parts of that as a committee.
And also business, you know, everything, the denounce building, throwing...
I like it, too. I think any stage in life, you can, you know, apply it to, whether you're young or middle-aged or old. I like it.
Well, so I guess what we were looking for is approval by the council then to go ahead and adopt this as our new tagline. Obviously, they'll, your letterhead and whatnot will change over and move forward with the picture. "Life in Bloom" will become...
Is that text in the cotton ball kind of what the letterhead will look like? Are we gonna be creative with that?
No, I think we want to bring some ideas to the same committee after you approve the actual wording and try to update the art a little bit. That's why I was asking earlier.
Were there any other taglines that you discussed?
Lots.
Boards full.
He has a good memory.
I mean, I don't dislike it, but I'm not like, "Ah, I love it." Some I don't like it, but it's not like I'm passionate about it. I was just trying to be honest. It's definitely better than the last one.
Well, it's better than "The Dirty Secret."
Yeah, "The Dirty Secret," it's a lot cleaner. That was the last one that we brought back was "Washington City, Southern Utah's Dirty Little Secret." That was the last one. So we're making progress here. Are we in full bloom? I'm not positive we're in full bloom on this one either. Like, I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't mind even just seeing just real quick a list of some of those. And if, and just kind of, I mean, I could shoot you email, but if the consensus is the council likes it, look, I'm just one-fifth of that, so.
Well, as we went through with, especially like I said, after Jeff came in and kind of helped us work through what he does with corporations, one of the things you always wanted to depict is growth and, and it's just like, you know, one of the things we kept saying, we talked about our economic development being the sign of open for business. And he said, "If you're thrown out for open for business, you go buy a building and it has open for business all over, what does it tell you? This guy's going out of business. He's doing anything he can do to get you in there." And so he says you wanted to depict that life is great here, and kind of, and short, very short and concise. And so, like I said, we spent, I don't know how many weeks.
There's a lot of words.
Yeah, I mean, we put it on the board, and sometimes we'd walk out thinking we had the right one. We'd come back the next week and say, "Oh, that doesn't really, that isn't really kind of where they're..." And one day, the "Life in Bloom" came out of, and I, one of the big members, it did. Well, somebody just said, "Life in Bloom." And it's like, hey, that kind of, and then we went to the cotton balls. Well, that fits with his, it kind of keeps, so, anyway.
Yeah, it sounded like you've kind of done this, but most of these things really come up through a process of several focus groups. You get the focus groups in there and do that two or three times through, and you come out with some pretty decent things to work with.
Well, that's like I said, we did, we brought in, the committee had, oh, what's his name that's on the county? Ada Zion. Kevin Lewis was part of our committee who had been through this total branding with Ada Zion. So he brought some great insights and whatnot in with him. We brought Jeff in as part of that.
And don't we have like a city designation? Aren't we like Garden City, USA? Or don't we have something along those lines that...
Well, there was a long time ago, and when I say a long time ago, decades ago, there seemed to be some tag somewhere that we were Garden City, but I think that was several decades ago.
Like 10 decades ago?
Like 10 decades ago.
The one just before Dogtown came in?
I think, I think it was, I think it was when Dad was mayor, Utah's Garden City.
Well, maybe "Life in Bloom" is a nice evolution of that.
I have maybe one, I won't call it a criticism, but comment, is we do have several, and they're not cities, but communities in our area that have the base word of bloom in their name. And so I don't know if we think that is closely related or not. I don't feel like it is, but there's Bloomington and Bloomington Hills, which is based from the word bloom.
Not of that.
That would never become a discussion, anyway.
I don't see it as a problem, but... We've got two areas that are blooming already.
Well...
I like it. I like Councilman Staley would probably enjoy seeing the list of ideas.
Okay.
But I like this, too.
You have to take the list and kick it around with neighbors, friends.
Okay. Well, what I'll probably do is just email that list to you. You'll rather come back through a presentation. I'll shoot that list to you and then we'll...
Great. Could you email me just that original picture that's got the crepe mortal flowers and the "Life in Bloom"? The one that was just there, yeah. I like that he was sharing it with a few people and just getting their impressions, too.
We really wanted one with the fish. That's "Life in Bloom." Well, one of the things that I shared with our group, and I thought it was a great thought, I think it came from Councilman Staley as we talked about the Ada Zion branding, and he had mentioned the fellow that was in that commercial, that he really wanted, he wished they would have depicted him coming with his family, or coming home to his family. And so I took that back because that resonated with me, that really what is "Life in Bloom" is our families. And it's recreating, it's doing things as families. And so that's kind of why when we hit with bloom, it's like, okay, yeah, this kind of resonates with that. And so, anyway, we'll shoot you that list across and we'll keep working.
Thanks for your time on that, Councilman Turrit.
It's been a fun process. Really, like I said, we're a great group to work with, a lot of ideas.
It's funny, because some of the most frustrating things I've had to do are like focus groups where you've got to be as creative as a group, but also in a way that's not very easy. But at the end, it's sometimes very rewarding as well, once you finally come up with something and feel like you can come together.
Certainly, yeah. I agree. All right. Item number eight, report from officers from assigned committees. Anybody got anything to report tonight?
Mayor Protem, I'll just report. It's my desire and kind of the Waystitcher's desire that this council consider an ordinance adopting or rejecting curbside recycling. So unless there's an objection, it's my hope that we can have it on the next regular city council meeting. Manager, do you have any problem with that?
No, I'm trying to decide what is it that they are really securing from this?
We need to have a...
Because didn't we adopt an opt-out? I'm just not sure what the difference would be.
We need to resolve, I guess, are there, I'm trying to think, are there any details that we need to finish resolving on that?
Well, we do, and we'll bring it. Probably the biggest we just need to resolve is the ultimate fee. And we're working on that now, but we would probably have just implemented that in the master fee schedule. And so I guess the only reason I have some confusion is I thought that we pretty well gave them a clear understanding in the last adoption, because we chose the opt-out.
And you're correct. You're correct.
So we will, we're working on the fee right now. I can update a little bit more on that as we get to...
Other discussion? Is that all you needed?
That's all, okay.
All right, and we moved on to item number nine, our city manager report.
Why we're just on that topic, let me just touch, and I talked to Councilman Segno about this, who's really spearheaded this whole process for us. We did meet his staff to determine the logistics of the curbside. And we're still waiting, I don't know if you've seen anything yet, Councilman, it was my understanding that it was supposed to be out last week. We're still waiting for a media kit that will kind of give the same information out, the same branding for the curbside recycling. And then we've begun the process of doing the evaluation. There certainly will be a small administrative fee, but it's probably not going to be fairly significant. But we need to do that, bring that back to council. And then how we're probably going to approach this is we're developing a page in which if you choose to opt-out, then you will go, and the opt-out period, I believe, is October 1 is when that starts. You will go, we will refer you to a page where you will actually input the information. So we'll probably have you put your utility bill and your name and address, and then click that you are opting out. That way we can record those things. They will be, we can track those. And so now if somebody doesn't have internet, we have options to assist them with that as well. But that's the direction we're kind of going with that. So, and right now, just waiting for this media kit from the district, so.
Neil Swendham and the district manager has offered to come to our meeting or become available with some of those tools. And also just to present to the... become available with some of those tools, and also just to present to the council if desired to, to assist in that process.
Well, I think it's interesting, you ask an interesting question, because the press has covered these boats in the other city, and they actually covered ours, too, but they keep referring to all the cities who have passed it, and we keep seeing, we, we keep, seems that we keep being missed by the fact that, I believe Washington was actually one of the first cities that did the decision on, on the recycling, yeah, on the opt-out, and as we know, some cities are making it mandatory.
Well, as of today, just to, just to give the district a little bit of a break, the district manager was not certain whether we had approved it or not, and so, we'll get that cleared up, and...
Yeah, we can probably send over to him the, uh...
The resolution.
The resolution. Yeah. Just on a couple of other quick, um, issues, um, I don't know if you had an opportunity to go past the, down the Buena Vista Road, but the detention basins and the construction on the, uh, on the right-of-way there between Buena Vista and I-15 are, are well under construction, and probably only, probably about mid-September, they should be completed, those are gonna be a very nice stormwater feature, as you know, when we've had our impacts of the rain up on that north side, especially up on the cliff levels, it's, it's sheeted down and down Buena Vista, so that'll be a great project for us.
One question on that, and maybe it's more for Mike, is, is the way those are designed gonna make it so that pipeline doesn't come, come hyper-filled, and start spouting at the bottom of Main Street again?
It is, it is.
So, so they're more, basically designed to keep that, the reason we had the problem last time is because they washed out and did fill the pipe up, and...
Yes, it, they're designed as a detention basin and a sedimentation basin, so, one of our big problems is the amount of sediment we're getting down, and the rock and debris, so, it'll settle it out, it'll detain it, and it'll slow it down.
Yeah, and the last time, so yeah, it takes the energy out, um, that's the important thing.
Correct.
Takes the energy out, drops the debris, but the last storm we had, which this will fix this one, too, is it stayed mostly on that side of Buena Vista, then hit the retention basin, and then as it came under to the Mill Creek area, it hyper-pressurized back to Main Street, but we will catch it on that side of Buena Vista, and now I have a very big pipe that'll transport over to the debris basins on that right-of-side.
Part of that overall project is debris development, they'll be actually building two basins up on the Main Street type drainage, which...
Right near that spot where there's traditionally been a basin?
Yes, and they'll actually pipe part of that up aways, and then build a basin, and then up around the corner from the existing development, they'll be having a larger basin.
Great. And then, we're just waiting for still easements to be signed on one of our other pieces of property down Telegraph, and we've not received anything with respect to that, um...
Manager, on that one, if it's, what's what I'm thinking about, is that something that we could get some council involvement on that, especially...
Well, it'd be fantastic.
I'd love to, to try to help resolve that, I think I know the one you're referring to, and I had, had that on my notes as well, but...
Yeah, any help would be appreciated, uh...
What can we do, is that a situation where we can meet, um, can we meet with the staff that's involved with that, with maybe a council member or two, or the mayor or someone, or is that, or is that better something to be brought to us, and that brought back through maybe a workshop session, what's the proper way to, it'd be nice to get that done?
Well, really, the issue is the easement documents are with the property, so the easement documents have been written, and we just haven't heard if they have a concern with the easement documents.
If, if it's what I think you're referring to, I, I believe there's just some, some concerns with a little bit of verbiage that, that could go either way, and, and, and so, maybe that's a conversation you and I can have, or Councilman Turick and I can have with you, or Mike.
Yeah, anything we can do to move that along, because we've received no information back on that.
Very good, thank you.
All right, project is 3650, the widening out on 3650, as you know, that project is advertised, and that bid will be opened on August 20th, and come before the council in your next, in your next council meeting, um, uh, the Telegraph Improvement Project, if you haven't noticed, we flattened out, the road stopped shifting, and that's the reason we've been waiting up on, toward the Highland area on Telegraph, um, and that should stop shifting, and so that's now been repaired, and we would encourage you to drive over, it's very smooth, um, but as part of that project, of course, we have the safety improvements, the guardrails going along there, and, uh, that, uh, has been bid, the low bid was Dry Creek Structures, and that issue, that was a, a, a grant, safety grant, uh, we got, so, and then, um, Washington Fields Road Phase 4, that's from Lost Ridge to 3650, design is 60% complete, uh, we're gonna wait until, uh, spring to begin that construction, just so that we don't interfere with the fall events out on, uh, Staley Farm area, and because of, uh, capital issues, so I think those are just really the highlights. Oh, okay, well, yes, Eldon Parks, we got delayed just a little bit, it's very still here, uh, do you wanna give an, oh, great, so you'll get all the details here.
I'm Craig with Alliance, so, park's going good, moving along, uh, we're anticipating it to be completed first of October, uh, right in there, they've got all the landscaping in and Fields 1 and 2, they're working on Field 4 right now, buildings all masoned up, and they're trying to get it framed, so, kinda where we're at, parking lots, lots coming, I think sod's gonna be here September 1st, so, it's kinda where it's at.
We can play on it October 1st, or you're just turning it over to us, and we, we as a city may want to let that, that grass and sod season a little bit?
The, the sod needs to be seasoned, um, that's why we're, the sod's supposed to be here first of September, so we're trying to lay it the first couple of weeks of September, and then, I think there's probably like 30 days that we need, so we might be able to, first of October, the project might be done, we might have to wait two weeks to actually get some actual soccer play, but we'll have to get with Barry on his, how, his plan of how he wants to stage that out, but that's kind of our plan.
Be more careful, season it properly, not such a rough end, damage it.
Yeah, you, you definitely, in these first couple of months, you know, I mean, scheduling tournaments or anything like that, we might wanna look at that, so, but it's moving along good, so.
Part of the process that's been made so quickly, is that because of the grade that was already, I mean, wasn't it already basically to grade before we came in?
So, so in phase one, our initial grading, we graded the entire site, that way we could get it set up, and we put in those roughness rocks as well to help with...
Was phase one since, since we've been working on it within the last few months, or, it seemed like there was a rough grade already that was kind of designed?
So, back in 2011, it was, 'cause it was just kind of a dump pile for a lot of years, we came in and we built the parking lot and the fishing pond and all that, and in that phase, we graded the entire thing.
Okay, and that was phase one?
Yes, and we graded phase two and three, which is all the fields, and kinda rough graded it out to get it, to get it close to grade, came in and put some roughness rock to route, so that that all was installed, and now they're having to come in, and they're still doing grading, because it was just a rough grade, and now that we fine-tuned everything, they're grading material and getting everything set to grade.
But that's a lot of to move along much quicker than it would have otherwise, okay, I wonder why it was going so fast, so...
Well, Councilman, you'll probably remember, one of the significant reasons why we graded was all the permitting issues that was occurring right then, with all the multiple federal agencies, and we were able to take care of them in all one fell swoop, and then let it sit.
Yeah, that was with the construction of the bridge, stuff like that, so.
I'll probably just mention one more item, too, uh, thanks.
Thank you for that update.
And that is just, uh, you can look over here and see the construction over here, I just stood up there and watched them hoist the front wall, um, up, and, uh, so that project is on schedule, um, I think actually they're looking, I don't have it for sure, but I think December, actually, on the project, and so it's moving along, and hopefully within the next few weeks, you wanna take an opportunity to walk over there and work with that.
Thank you, Manager Carter, for that report, any other...
For our elections, we need to do our canvassing, so between the 18th and the 25th, we have to wait at least seven days, but we can't do more than, um, 14, so, the 18th is a Tuesday, so from there to the 25th, we need to canvas, and it'll just be a short meeting, just everything that's come in since the elections will be shown, and then it'll be official, so...
Do you typically do that at the beginning of a regular or work session?
No, we use, we can call a special meeting, so, we don't have a meeting between then and now, right?
What's the timeframe again?
It has to be no sooner than seven days, and no later than 14, so it would fall, if you wanted to put it off clear to the 25th, that's 14 days, and that would be on a workshop, or you can call a short special meeting, do the canvassing, and it takes like 10 minutes.
Are we within the guidelines on the 25th?
Just barely.
What's the reason not to do that?
Just, just our elections will be official at that time.
Agony for the candidates.
I like that, I, I go for the 25th.
25th makes sense, I don't think there's, I think the numbers and the returns are not gonna change any, I don't think there's anything that's real close.
No, but right now, there's probably... Currently, there's probably almost 100 ballots that haven't been counted.
Provisionals and whatnot.
Mm-hmm, provisionals, and, and then the rest of the absentees that are slowly rolling in, as long as they're postmarked before the 10th, then we can still count them, but I don't see that we have enough out there to make any real difference, but...
I'm fine doing it the 25th.
Stick with the 25th, okay, we'll just do it like before the workshop, okay, thank you.
All righty, item number 10, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to be adjourned, Mayor Protem.
Motion by Councilman Segno.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Nissen.
Nissen, aye.
Staley, aye.
Segno, aye.
Turick, aye. Thank you, council, and thank you citizens for joining with us this evening.